I will call this meeting to order. And first item is to adopt the agenda. I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Are there any additions?
Are there any additions to the agenda?
Counselor Zelinski. Yeah, I believe a discussion from a special meeting was tabled for today. Is that for an in-camera discussion or is it over in the public here?
So, from staff, the recommendation would be to discuss any matters that are not necessarily related to legal or third-party negotiations. That can be discussed outside of in-camera. However, the privacy piece, confidential items, should be kept in an in-camera perspective and can be addressed at an in-camera meeting after.
Is this on the agenda or no?
It wasn't. The council wants to make that call to add an item to the agenda, to the discussion.
Okay. So we'll add that. And where should we put that?
What's in section?
The what?
I'm thinking 7B.
Okay. We'll call it 7B. And we'll deal with it then. So, any further additions to the agenda? Seeing none, a motion to accept it as amended. Counselor Zelinski, Counselor Thompson, I don't think we need a secondary. All those in favor? Okay.
No, this little lady on the speaker.
Oh, oh, I forgot about you. You're looking well today.
What'd you say?
Okay. Okay, so you voted to accept the agenda?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. We have minutes from the committee as a whole, December 16th. Those committee minutes. Look to adopt those.
I have an amendment or clarification on the minutes.
Okay, clarification on the minutes.
Through you to our staff. The motion on my page five with respect to the art gallery. And the motion indicates that the committee as a whole refers to fee for service of $8,000 from Gallery Two to the budget process. I have talked with staff on this and that was basically in reference to the dissolution of the Boundary Arts Council. And these were the funds that were generally on an annual basis granted to the Arts Council. And the gallery is now going to take that function over at this time. So I don't know if we need to maybe just add that clarification to the minutes. And through you to Daniel, your worship.
Thank you. Yeah, so the Arts Council budget last year was $4,500. And with the dissolution of the B-DAC, the art gallery was kind enough to take this on and distribute those funds for us. So they're, but based on the feedback that they've received, there's definitely a higher need in the community for that kind of level of support. I know council discussed the option of if it would be an Arts Council, then they could have access to other funding. The gallery isn't part of the Arts Council and can't be. So they don't, they are not able to leverage that funding against other provincial funding potentially. I know there was a question there. However, I don't think that that amount has ever been increased since its inception. So it's going to be up to council. But yes, clarification on that is definitely, it's for that particular fee for service. The larger fee for service for providing the art gallery services is a completely different animal.
Thank you. It just, when I first read it, I thought that that was what the request that was intended for the gallery the next seven years. So thanks for the clarification.
And so maybe if council wants, we can simply add a component to the discussion section there to clarify that this particular resolution is meant for the Arts Council piece and not for the larger Gallery Two services.
Okay, does that work? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Okay. So, motion to adopt the minutes of the 16th. Counselor Thompson? Don't need a secondary. Don't need one, but thank you, Counselor Korlek. All those in favor?
My turn.
Okay, thank you. We're at presentations from staff, as I don't see any area D-Rep here. And we don't have any registered petitions or delegations. So we're looking at the monthly highlight reports. And the recommendation is that the committee as a whole receives the reports from the department managers. So I'm looking for that motion and discussion. Motion, Counselor Thompson, discussion about the monthly reports. Anyway, Counselor Zelinski?
Thank you, Chair. Through you to staff, I guess. The capital projects report, is this the way we're going to see them from now on? Because I know we were looking for more than this to keep us in tune with what's going on as far as the flood recovery stuff. So the last, I think, three months, this is all in session with the capital projects report.
Thank you, through the chair. Staff is planning on adding more to this. The simple fact is we came back from holidays with the day to pull this particular report together and add it to the agenda. So this particular go-around, we couldn't add more. Mr. Dinsdale is preparing a workshop for council to get them caught up on the past projects. He's been, for the last two or three months, been involved with all the projects and trying to get a handle of where things are at. So you'll see better regular updates as part of this report over the next month or two, I would say, once he's got a clear project charter on all the items and all the different projects that are on board so he can update council on a regular basis. And the workshop today is afternoon.
Yeah, there. Just about everything on the current planning heading. Fore-industrial lots, small residential lots, how are these proceeding? And hopefully, we're going to get some new lots on board here soon. Just a comment, please.
Some of these are confidential, so we can't talk about them, but they are progressing fairly well. There is one rezoning that's coming up later on tonight at the regular meeting.
Okay. Any news on the end of Boundary Drive? We rezoned and did some small lots at the north end of Boundary. How is that progressing?
There is some discussion with the developer. It's in his hands on where that proceeds and when that proceeds.
Any other? Anyone in the gallery? Okay. So the motion is to receive the reports. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Brings us up to item 7A, which is AKBLG resolutions. Do we have any?
Thank you, through the chair. So this was a placeholder we put in for council. I believe we sent an email out before the holidays to council to start thinking about this. I believe at the end of January is when the deadline is for AKBLG resolutions. Staff would just like to know if there's any particular item we council would like to have prepped or if council has thought of any resolutions themselves to take forward for this year's AKBLG meeting in April.
Counselor Zelinski?
Thank you. Just to my colleagues here, a couple of things that have been mentioned. I think there was a suggestion on the Expropriation Act where we thought that there could be enhancements there. I know we were trying to, the medical community, and trying to support some of their issues.
Yeah, I haven't had a meeting yet.
Other than that, the ones that we did have to report already, I don't know if there's any additional stuff we can do on them. I haven't heard the government response on them yet.
Counselor Moslin?
Yes, thanks, Chair. I was wondering, and it has come up, is this the responsibility for emergency weather or extreme weather? We have already forwarded a motion to the RDKB from this council that they start to examine the possibility of adding extreme weather to emergency responsibilities. We mentioned it, we have mentioned it in discussions recently. Would it be appropriate to ask staff to, you know, I know there is, who manages what in an emergency is kind of complicated. And the scope of what they manage is also sort of set in stone. But we are beginning to, I think we are, council is, that, you know, there are more emergencies than flood, water, flood, fire, and drought. Perhaps extreme weather might become inclusive in some sort of regional initiative.
Counselor Thompson?
Thank you. I know that under the Extreme Weather Act and its accompanying regulations, that the minister can declare an extreme weather. And I don't believe that that has occurred yet for our area. I also believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, staff, can the council declare that as well or is that a different?
It's a number of people that can do it. Sometimes service providers can do it. I'm not aware of council doing that. But again, it's usually a provincial thing and/or provider talent. If there's someone that's designated that makes that call that temperatures drop below a certain point. But I think looking at extreme weather as part of your emergency operations is important because remember, a lot of things can happen around the province today. There's communities that are now freezing without power. And if the power went out throughout the whole city, is there a place with a generator that could be housed so that people could go to that facility and at least be warm for any citizen? So I think having that plan, having that ability to enact something should, you have not only cold weather, but ice storms and other things. So I think so certainly by going back and asking the regional district to work with the community so that in fact, you have a warming center for the community if all the power is out and it's going to blow up.
Hang on a sec. Mr. Johnson?
Okay, I'll point out another one. In 2015, we had a smoke emergency here. And I found out, because somebody pointed at me, we have a CDC in this province. And the CDC specifically has documents that advise municipalities and other things, other entities, on how to deal with a smoke emergency. For over a week, people with asthma couldn't go outdoors or they were told they had to leave town. And there definitely is guidelines on how to do the same thing for a smoke emergency that you do for bad weather. In other words, create a place where people who have a hard time breathing can go and get a place to breathe and up to the information and a whole bunch of other things. And that didn't happen here. And it hasn't happened since. And I don't know whether any community in the province has taken that seriously or even if it's on their radar. But we didn't burn, but we sure as hell had a lot of smoke. That's it.
Thank you.
I felt it.
Counselor Zelinski?
Excuse me for using that word.
Good, thank you. To staff again, so we don't have an up-to-date agreement with RDKB for running the emergency operations. How is that a negotiation?
Thank you, through the chair. Through the changes on the fire department side, which is also the emergency coordinator for the city, Mr. Siegler is going to take this on this year along with ERD. I talked with Mr. Chandler at the RDKB side in November when we had a conference call. I tried to have another conference call before this today so I could update council on any RDKB relations, but that hasn't happened yet, so I can't. But the plan is on the RD side, they have added it to their work plan to get this done this year. It largely hinges on the RDKB because it is a regional response plan. They are taking feedback from all the emergencies that we had over the years, including the flooding event and the outcomes and debriefs that were had to build a new response plan based on that. So if council would want to, we can definitely bring up extreme weather as part in part of those negotiations and have, or not even negotiations, discussions, and have them include a portion of this at least. Maybe this would also work with a potential community center down the line, that there is a provision may be made where some could be used there.
Okay. Follow-up. Got follow-up. Thank you. So doesn't sound like we're going to have an agreement in place with RDKB before flood season. Can we make sure we have a letter of understanding even if something in place?
Yeah, through the chair, yes, we can easily get a letter in place, some memorandum of understanding to continue using, or letter of understanding, continue using the old plan at least. So we're all on board with the same process.
Okay, one second before Counselor Moslin. Yes, extreme weather, the one that hasn't been mentioned is heat as well. So to get back to the topic, which is AKBLG resolutions, I believe that, yes, we should flesh out something. My question through me to staff is, what deadline does staff have? AKBLG is the end of January, but staff needs time to crack. So what is staff's deadline for council resolutions? Today?
Well, that's why I sent the email out before the holidays for council to think about things. So ideally, if council can bring something forward for the meeting on the 27th. In the past, some members of council have prepped their own items to bring forward and discuss. If council wants to do that for the evening on the 27th, to bring a few resolutions and make a decision of what they want. If council wants staff to prepare something, give us some guidance today to what you would like to see so we can prep something as well for the 27th and council can, at that point, make a decision to go forward or not with a certain item.
Counselor Moslin?
Yes, Chair, thank you. It is, I believe, an AKBLG issue because it's not just the RDKB, let us say, other two regional districts as well. And I know that in the Social Services Advisory Group and discussions with Nelson Cares, Central Kootenay Regional District, they did talk about, you know, having some sort of emergency response plan at the regional level. So I feel that I'm speaking in favor of some sort of motion, just simply to put it on the plate of AKBLG so that all three of our regional districts realize that there is a bit of a gap here in our emergency services having to do with extreme weather. In the past, there was such a thing as an extreme weather response plan, which is well delineated and is usually helped by a provider. And when the trigger arrived at, the button got pushed, everything fell into place. We don't have that. And I think maybe, and I'm apprehensive, that something so important would be in the hands of a service provider. When you're talking about a natural phenomenon, one would think that it would be better in the hands of government. So I hope that we can bring forward some sort of motion about extreme weather to the regional level. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, to sum up and before we move on, I think.
I do believe there is extreme weather and just an emergency situation that are at regional districts now. But it certainly wouldn't hurt to have their representatives and Mr. Mayor or myself take it again and just emphasize the importance of getting, working together to make this an area of why in this situation, because I think it's really important.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Korlek. Basically, to recap, what we need is ongoing discussions with the regional district for our specific area. We need to have a motion go to AKBLG to get us the, our whole area again onto the same plan. And then that goes to the EBCM hopefully, and then the province so that the province realizes that they can't just say, oh, you should have a plan, that they should put some manpower and money into it so that everyone in the province has a plan because the weather's not going to get any better. So, Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I think that's an excellent idea. And through you, Counselor Moslin, do you have an example of the, that plan that you were referring to that we could give to our staff or whoever's going to prepare that motion?
Yes, your worship. I do have that extreme weather response plan for 2016, 2017 for our community. It's not active now, there's a gap.
But that background information would go, and we'll also work on the motion amongst ourselves to help staff. Okay?
Thank you, through the chair. So just to quickly clarify, council would like us to focus simply on this particular extreme weather-related scenario to A, the AKBLG, but also potentially to a larger provincial level. And to keep discussions flowing with the RDKB on a continuous basis right now until these larger things develop on the provincial level.
Yes, and the mayor, Counselor Korlek can also appoint the RD at their meeting, the direction that we're going and what we would like to see. Okay. Flip that over. Okay, so that was just a discussion. So, oh, do we need a motion? Does staff need a motion? Yet or no? No. So we'll be looking at our deadline on or before the 27th. For this one, as much before, but we'll be doing that decision on the 27th. There are a couple of other issues that we should be bringing forward too, so we'll work on those. Okay, so now we're down to 7B. Does somebody want to introduce that? Counselor Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Probably this came at my eighting on, I guess, when nothing else, so I might as well start the discussion. So the officer's bylaw that we have presented to us this morning is pared down from what the current one is.
Can I, can I? We're on 7, sorry. Sorry, the shelter, the warming center. Sorry, that was probably my confusion there. So is, anybody want to, or can leave it up to me to start it? Okay. So, yeah, I don't know what to say there. We've been, the city has been approached by a provider for a, to run a warming center, especially with the recent drop in temperatures. And the request that would come to council would be to allow it to operate in the 7,500 dollars. Okay? So that's what we've been asked about, would we consider allowing, or not allowing it, not enforcing, I guess, or by law? Counselor Zelinski?
So I haven't seen any proposals. So if a cold weather emergency shelter is to be run, it'd be nice to know what the rules are around it. And we haven't seen that as Mr. Pratt walks into the room. So that's one of my concerns. My bigger concern, and it always has, and I'll try and be brief because people have heard me say this many, many times before, is I believe it's very imperative that we follow our bylaws and we enforce our bylaws. If we do not, if council does not follow their own bylaws, I don't know what kind of a society we have then. We are a country of laws. We expect certain behaviors and people to follow the rules. We have built our rules, our bylaws, in such a way that they can be changed, that they can be altered, and that allows us to go through time as things change. We have a, we had some documentation given us from Community Futures that talk about investment readiness. There's a real big chunk in there about cities, communities following their rules so that when people, investors, look at your community, they know that, know what to expect. Once we do not follow the rules, that's when the slippery slope happens and all of a sudden, it's someone's decision whether or not, you know, we follow the rules or not. I would hate that role to the taxpayer saying, well, if council isn't following the rules, why should I? Why should I pay my taxes? Why should I pay my electrical bill? Heck with the jump in the snow on the sidewalk. So it's, again, it's, in my view, it's very important that we follow those rules and we have mechanisms to change them. And I'll leave that, thank you.
Further, Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I totally agree with what Counselor Zelinski has said. However, this is an emergent situation. The proposed provider is, in my opinion, an acceptable provider that would operate such a facility with roads and regulations. I find it absolutely regrettable that 7,500 Dawson Drive was opened last night. Having said that, I realize that there were people at risk. The winds last night moved near. And I thought, oh, yeah, that doesn't... Well, what can I say? It's just, it's a really unfortunate situation. Yes, I do believe that council is responsible to follow its bylaws and the laws of the province and the country. However, in an emergent situation such as this, which in my opinion it is, through the mayor to our management, are there exceptions that we as a council can either by resolution or some other means deal with these types of situations immediately? Or do we have to go through the process and allow people to be on their own and fend for themselves? their, fend for themselves?
Anybody want to?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I think, I think when we look at all these types of situations, we recognize that, you know, it's not a perfect world, and I would argue that in any given city, at any given day, at any given time, there's, there's things that aren't complying with their bylaws. We don't have enough bylaw officers, lawyers, and money to enforce every bylaw at every moment. That's just a general statement. There's also times where things don't fit, but people are also allowed time to comply. And we give those, those, because bylaws can be complex, evolve in season, and sometimes things change, and we don't sit there and go through every piece of land, every minute of every day to make sure it's always complying. So, I think there's always a gap between what is happening in reality on the day to day and those bylaws, and there's a big difference, I think, you know, in that you can't necessarily enforce all the time. And we're dealing with an extreme weather situation. I don't think anyone, certainly no one on staff, thought that necessarily opening that facility was the first choice when we, when we were asked, you know, is there something that could be done? Hotel program was tried, motel program was tried last year, didn't quite get off the ground, and, and so really was, is there anybody to step up? Council's always concerned about a provider. One of the first criteria that council said before supporting anything was a solid provider that they could trust, and the community could trust. So, here we have, you know, Boundary Family Services as a provider, not necessarily in this line of work, but they've come forward, staking their own reputation to help out in this emergency situation, and they came forward. The second thing that happens is, so where are we going to do it? Where's, working with BC Housing, not, not the city per se, but with BC Housing, and where would you put it? Well, that's, that was the site that they could literally turn the key on, turn on the heat, and get some people out of the cold. And so now the real question for council is, you know, what, what are you going to do about it? As I said, every day there are bylaws that are hard being followed, but what are you prepared to do? And, Your Worship, I think at this point in time, since it is 15, 16 below outside, you know, I think the important thing is to, is to let Boundary Family Services see if they can keep these people out of the cold for the next period of time, and, and to monitor the situation every day. I can tell you, they're hugely aware of the concerns and the criticism and, and the problems in the past, so it's not as if they're, they're, you know, not aware of that. I think they're going to try it real hard. And that leads to them what you do in the future, and I think what it, what it leads to is to be able to get the situation monitored, make sure the community is safe, that there's problems in the community, let us know what they are right up front, is there other things we need to do to, to make that site, or they need to do, and BC Housing needs to do, because it won't be the city. And then get, get a plan in place to do this properly, through either a TUP, through a proper site, if there's going to be a shelter, then that comes through as a rezoning and those, the exact same type of thing you do with any, somebody else who wasn't in compliance. I don't think this council would shut them down the next day and say, okay, how do we bring this into compliance? And a lot of people do. So, Your Worship, my, my recommendation at this point is to see if you could make this work, at least in the short term, get them off the street. Right now, we have problems in the library, people trying to sleep in the library. You know, there, there's greater risk to the community having people trying to find their own emergency shelter wherever that they can do it, than necessarily having a provider that we trust be able to try to take a crack at this. So, it's a difficult situation. No one's asking council to break the law, but certainly, at this point, if we step through it, we could actually bring this into compliance at some point in time, and, and ultimately, council has the right to enforce the bylaws if they choose.
I have Mr. Johnson.
Okay. I'm going to lock my little bleeding heart up in a box, I'm not even going to touch it here.
Can you?
I'm a tax, okay, I'm a taxpayer here, Les Johnson, GFTV.ca, but I am a taxpayer. I'm not sure how many people in C4 are taxpayers, but the reason I bring that up is simple. With all the things that our community is going on right now, and Jay Daniel just passed me the mic, people are going to think I'm the council member. No, no, you think I'm a council member. Anyway, please, could you get the gallery to stop talking directly to me? Talk to me through the mayor, please.
Dan, don't talk to her, please. Okay, thank you. Okay.
So, last year, we had a warming center, and it was funded not by the citizens of the city, but by another organization, another higher government. But apparently that was not good enough. I mean, I know that it was in the summertime and people didn't like it, but the reason I bring this up is simple. There was a guy last year, was it the year before, he lost a couple of toes to frostbite. But we had a warming center, we didn't get sued. Now, in the intervening time, what has council done? Well, council has gone and pretty much enforced the bylaw on the facility. But you know, up that same side of Donaldson, there's at least two, three other places where people live, they actually live there 24 hours a day, year round, and as far as I know, council did not enforce the bylaw on them, maybe their grandfather, I don't know. But my problem with this is simple. Because council enforced the bylaw selectively like that, some lawyer would have good ammunition, and if some homeless person gets frostbite and loses some digits or a limb or something like that, now what happens is, we as taxpayers in this community are on the hook for any liability, and lawsuit that comes from that. You may think, oh, no big deal, you know, why would some homeless person get a lawyer? They can't afford a lawyer. I mean, I can't even afford a lawyer to go after the people who I think are liable to me. That's a side issue, issue. But here's the thing, one lawsuit that results in a $50,000, $75,000, $100,000 claim against the city, that's 2% extra on my property taxes that didn't have to be there, because, you know, if we had a warming shelter, it was paid for by some other organization, there would be no money coming in my pocket. Now, if the person in, in question that got frostbite was a young person and their brain was not already rotted away by drugs, meaning that they, some lawyer could give that a reasonable argument that'd be for another 40 years of earning power, the judgment could run into, oh, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, and that would be borne by me, that taxpayer, and all of you. And I have no idea how many people who are in the group that opposes all this and has been driving for all this stuff to be done slowly, I don't know how many of them are taxpayers in the city, but I am, and it kicks me off. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. I have...
Oh, here, here. What? There you go.
I have Councilor Zelinski, but just one note. No, we would not be sued. Or, or no, I can't say that, we can be sued, but it has no relevance on the city. So, Councilor Zelinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to rebut a few of the comments, the city's policy is we act on complaints. So, so we did have a complaint on that building, the other buildings mentioned by the gallery, I have not heard any complaints on, so we're a complaint-driven thing. We're also talking about, yes, it's an emergency now, and, and we've got to do something. The unfortunate part is, we knew this a year ago. It was brought up this table, at this table a year ago, and one little saying that I go by quite a bit is, someone's poor planning should not create an emergency on my part. Yeah, I suppose, with this, why, just, thank you.
I have Ms. Palmer, and then Thompson, and then a hand in the back. Okay. Ooh, happy. Okay, Councilor Thompson. Or no, sorry, Ms. Palmer.
I'd like to rebut a couple of the things. I have a whole bunch of Freedom of Information requests that I got from BCH. The reason the motel programs fell apart was because Brian Taylor got involved, and that's why it fell apart. Otherwise, it probably would have been up and running and doing just fine. Also, in regards to the gentleman who lost his toes, unless there were two people that lost their toes, he was insisting on wearing steel-toed boots, even though he was offered warm winter boots, and he refused to go into a warm shelter. So, I'm thinking that was his choice. Just saying.
Thank you, Councilor Thompson. Somebody's still left here. Help me.
Oh, there I am. Okay. With respect to the shelter last year, that was an emergent situation as well, and we understood that it was going to be closed at the end of April, or pardon me, the end of March. Regrettably, it morphed into something more than that, and that was when council took the action that they did. It is my understanding that this extreme weather shelter would operate only until the end of March. And I, I have faith in the provider that there will be rules and regulations and no, none of the carryings-on that were experienced last year by any of the residents. So, I would, I'm going to say that I'm going to support the continuation of that extreme weather shelter from now until the end of March, operated by a, in my opinion, qualified service provider.
Okay, in the back.
This might sound like a funny question, but I was just wondering, how long?
Can, could you identify yourself?
Nikki Bass, resident of Grand Forks, taxpayer. How long and what are the steps that it takes to change a bylaw?
There's a real need to staff, what are the steps and how long?
Your Worship, there's a statutory requirement for public notice, and so that's usually where it takes the time, before you have a publication, put the application in, could take months or two, if you fast-track it, because it has to be published in a newspaper and those types of things. That's usually takes the time.
So, and how come the service provider is being kept quiet? Why is there no name provided as to the service provider as of yet?
The service provider was named earlier, and it's FIS, or the FIS, Boundary Family Individual Services. Mr. Pratt?
The "and" individual was dropped two years ago, we're Boundary Family Services.
Oh, okay. So, that, does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Ms. Bass? Okay. Councilor Mossen.
Thanks, Your Worship. I, I agree with Councilor Thompson, although there is no worship on the floor. I, we'd like to support Boundary Family Support Services as a qualified provider who has dug hard amongst themselves to have the courage to come forward to provide this temporary service for our community. Our community does benefit. I understand the immediate neighborhood, there will be impacts, but other parts of the community will benefit. And as councillors, we have to weigh that, and so it is not easy, it's never easy. I find that we can, I, I believe that I can in good conscious, conscience suspend the enforcement of the bylaw until March 20th, or March 2020, the end of March 2020, in order to provide humanitarian relief to those in coal. I also, even more importantly, want to show my support for Boundary Family Support Services as they take this task on and face even more daunting tasks in the future, as the provider for the affordable housing unit on 19th, as, which is a new service for them, okay, as well as their regular services. So, I, I want, I would like to thank them for having the courage to undertake this. I personally want to show my support for them. I'm trusting that the Social Services Advisory Committee will bring forward its support for this temporary plan, and that as a community, if we all together, we can make this work. Thank you, Your Worship.
I just wanted to say that, to add rather, that this service would be funded through BC Housing, but they won't fund without the support of council, supporting the, the service provider. So, that's another area that council has to become involved in.
Councilor Zelinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the, the planning process, the, the big thing and about this is the chance for the public, the community, to voice their concern on that service at that location. We have a location, people should be able to comment. We don't know what the service is. Again, I haven't seen a document to say whether it's 8 to 8, whether it's, you know, we heard March 30th, you know, if it, if it's 20th of, on March 15th, is that still okay, is it now a cooling center again? So, it's, it's, it's cutting out the public from voicing their opinions on a different type of service for the community. That's the problem with doing this ad hoc, is we have said that we are going to try to be a transparent council, we're going to be an open council, and part of that process is the ability for the public to comment, and that's what is getting cut out of this. We could have had this, this discussion a long time ago. So, that's, that's the problem, is this is not a democratic, politically-driven process at this time, it's a dictatorship, it's, this service is going there, and that's probably the biggest thing that I'm concerned about.
Councilor Moss, oh, sorry, Ms. Palmer.
I have a question regarding, I understand that Mayor Taylor has been discussing stuff with RDKB. RDKB stepped up and opened up the arena rooms, they opened up the curling rink, all sorts of stuff during the flood, and in an emergency situation like this, I'd like to know why the curling rink has washrooms, it's got a warm facility upstairs, why that was not opened up for this emergent situation, put into public rooms, and then can be closed when the emergency is no longer around.
Sure, I can't answer that. The only person that could probably is not here.
No, and I can't either.
So, yes?
Yeah. Apparently, it was brought up to regional district, and they didn't go very far. And that's all I can say on that one.
Councilor Moss, what?
First, Your Worship, I, I do, do not like doing this ad hoc. I, I do feel a great deal, perhaps a shame, that I've had, we've had a year to not have to do this ad hoc, and here we are. Nonetheless, we do have this humanitarian, humanitarian crunch. I want to point out that the public has been involved through the Social Services Advisory Crew, which has met at least once a month, and some months, two or three times, in open public meetings, with the press there, to discuss these possibilities, including of the arena and the curling rink. I do want to remind you that when the, or most of the, during the flood of May 18, 2018, most of the other programs within those buildings were suspended. So, it was a lot easier to provide emergency relief. In the situation now, no, most of those programs are still continuing, so it's a lot less easy to provide relief. Indeed, the Social Services Advisory Group, if you read the minutes which are publicly available, has been casting around through churches and different community groups, looking for a location and a provider. looking for a location and a provider. We have been looking for, literally, for months. If I had a New Year's resolution, one of them would be to never have to do this ad hoc again. That there be an emergency response, extreme weather response plan, a qualified provider, and a designated location for this event. Yes, that would be my resolve again. And I am embarrassed to say that it didn't happen this year, despite we have worked, council. We have really tried with our community to find a solution. And, you know, Mr. Pratt has chaired those meetings. The Boundary Family Support Services, it's indeed been their meeting as we've cast it around with a lot of community help from different groups, including Citizens4, who worked really hard on that, at that committee level. So it has been democratic, in my opinion. It hasn't been fruitful. I hate the ad hoc. I hate the last minute. I resolved that it would not happen again. With that in mind, I believe I can, in good conscience, not force our bylaws till the end of March 2020 to allow humanitarian relief of the operation of an extreme weather shelter plan. One other point, I believe the details of that plan, as well as the management of that plan, are going to become public in time. In fact, I think it's going to be a very short time with the meeting of the Grand Forks Social Services Advisory Group on Wednesday to discuss this, which will be in public. I hope that we take the 10 weeks to establish a plan that works, to make changes after studying the impacts on the neighborhood, reaching out to the neighborhood, that we can have an even better plan for January 2021. Those are my comments. Mayor, thank you.
I have Ms. Palmer and then Counselor Zelensky.
I sit on the Grand Forks S.S.A. team. And I'd just like to say, and I've said it there before and I'll say it again. If you've got more than two people knowing something that's going on, then it's going to get out because nobody can keep a secret. And there have been so many backroom deals going on behind the scenes in that group. It's impossible to say that that's been an honest working group. The other thing I would like to know is, I'd like to know what impact this is that you have a court case happening with the owner of this building and yet you're willing to let the bylaws slip, which tells pretty much everybody in Grand Forks that bylaws don't count anymore. You can do what you like. And how are you going to work on that one?
Counselor Zelensky?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I thought I heard Counselor Mazlin say that the Grand Forks Social Services Advisory Committee is the sounding voice for the community on this topic. And I disagree with that, the fact that we had an email that I think I shared with everyone, that the seniors group wanted to get involved and they were told, no, you'll have to ask the group as a whole.
They did ask and they have been invited.
They have, and that's great. But that's still, that's not our process. That is not a local government process.
Absolutely, you're right.
So we have different things put in place for the public comment. You know, we had a member of the gallery ask us about the planning process and I all agree with our CAO about two months. But I haven't seen an application, my staff has, for rezoning of a building. I haven't seen anything as far as what an emergency shelter is as opposed to a warming center, as opposed to another shelter. We don't know what we're talking about. We don't have any hours of operations. We don't know any of that. And I, it's a simple process. And in the scheme of things, a two-month process to clear up all of this stuff, to me, seems very minor, in my books, anyway. So again, you know, the service providers, the people concerned about having this service in our community know the steps, know the planning process, and did not follow through. And that's what confuses me is as a member, a public member of this community, when things change in your community, you know, we should allow an opportunity for voicing those opinions. And I've seen too many protests on the steps of the city hall than I care to because of the transparency issue, of the openness issue that we don't seem to be following through on.
Counselor Eberen Studley. And then I have Mr. Noseworthy, and then the front, and then Counselor Thompson.
Yeah, my main concern, of course, the whole process. Council does work by process. Sometimes those processes are long. Ideally, I'd like to see temporary use permit or something like that. That does take time, unfortunately, and we're sort of out of time. Then my other main concern is with the court cases. I'm not going to get into the detail of, there is litigation there, but most of the town does know there is litigation on that property. My gut definitely tells me that not enforcing the bylaw will add more fuel to that fire, unfortunately. So...
Thank you. Mr. Noseworthy?
Thank you. I'm not a public speaker, but I have a couple of things that I have to say and a couple of questions I'd like to ask. Did this council approve the opening of the warming center last night?
No.
No?
Yeah.
Then how did it become open? Magic?
You're going to have to ask Mayor Taylor.
Okay, well, it'd be nice if he was here because this is a pretty important meeting.
Yeah.
Also, I'd like to know how much city taxpayer dollars is going into this process before BCH steps up?
Zero.
Zero?
Yeah.
That's guaranteed?
Yes.
Other than staff?
Yeah, sorry, so that...
So it's not zero?
Yeah, it's not zero.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So I'm Bronwyn Bird. I'm a resident and taxpayer of Grand Forks. First, I just want to say how I'm really was glad to hear Counselor Thompson and Counselor Mazlin and their support for this. I'm also, on the other hand, extremely disappointed in some counselors who are so hung up on process. Like, don't get me wrong, I'm an elected official too. I believe in process. Process is needed for certain things. But this is an emergency situation. Would you want to be standing outside last night in those winds? Probably not. So although process is important and we have bylaws for a reason, sometimes you need to understand that emergency takes over. And I can guarantee you there are many places in this town that are not following the bylaws. And if it is complaint-driven, as counselors, you can make those complaints and have those bylaws enforced. But I'm pretty sure you're not doing that. So if you're going to enforce the bylaw here, then maybe you should start making complaints about other places that are not following the bylaw. Because that's just a double standard. And I also have to say I'm pretty disappointed in some of the people in this town. Like, I was on Facebook last night, which is a dark hole. And the people who are posting on Facebook certainly don't represent me and the resident that I am. Because some people were calling individuals who need an emergency shelter not part of our community, that they should basically pitch a tent and light it on fire. That is deplorable. I can't believe people would say that, that these people are not a part of our community. They are a part of our community. And I just, I'm not one of those kind of people. That is not Grand Forks, in my opinion. I cannot believe that people would say that. I completely support, I'm going to voice my opinion here. I completely support this emergency shelter. Because these homeless people, or any individual who needs a place to stay in the cold, they are a part of our community. They're human beings, for Christ's sake. And to say that they should just pitch a tent, I'm sorry, that's just disgusting.
Thank you. Har, is there further?
That's it.
Okay. Counselor Thompson?
Oh, thank you. Just a couple of comments. I sit on the Grand Forks Social Services Advisory Group and I have never been part of a backroom deal. I don't, I don't work that way. Secondly, we could leave those people in their circumstances that they were in. And God forbid, we lose another life, either through freezing to death or through a fire as a result of them trying to keep warm. I appreciate the fact, and this is a public process. The public has been given the opportunity here, which is why this has been placed on this agenda, to speak to the issue. I hear your complaints and your concerns. And I appreciate the opportunity to hear you. All the decisions that I make are not going to please everybody. And council, as you can, you can tell from this discussion, isn't in support or unified in the decision-making process. However, I am going to put forward the following resolution. And that is, and staff can help me with my wording if need be, that council will suspend enforcement of its bylaws as it relates to 7500 Donaldson Drive until March 31st, 2020.
What's the word?
Yeah.
Whether or not it's a recommendation to the regular meeting?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was going to ask. So your motion would be to...
Recommend the council.
Recommend the council and then that decision would be made tonight?
That's right.
Is there a secondary?
Social one.
Oh, don't need one. But thank you, Counselor Mazlin. Through, through me, do you?
Your Worship, just to clarify, the zoning, specifically zoning, not all.
Yeah.
Specifically zoning bylaws. And you may want to add, just for assurance of that, but, you know, that matter be monitored throughout that process, which at least allows that adjustment there.
Daniel?
And not regarding the resolution, but we do have an in-camera meeting scheduled after this. We have scheduled a phone call with legal counsel, as I advised counsel last night in an email, to be taken place during that, to answer any sort of legality questions. I've also arranged for Mr. Pratt to be here for that in-camera meeting as well, to speak to the rules and processes. He won't be able, I won't be able to share these with the public, but I can share a document with council in that in-camera meeting because the documents haven't been approved yet by his board. So there is some confidentiality there. We have to keep this confidential. But it can be shared about, and Mr. Pratt is going to be able to speak more openly during that meeting about timelines and so on, and opening hours and whatnot that he is envisioning for the site. It's just not possible at this stage outside of the in-camera meeting. I apologize, but that's just where we're at. So I hope this will help council make a good, informed decision tonight, if that's possible.
Yeah. Counselor Zelensky addressing the...
The motion, yes. And that's my concern is, again, without anything in front of me, not knowing rules, not knowing hours of operation, not knowing staffing levels, all that, it's a black hole. So, and you said in-camera today?
After this.
Yeah, after this, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Thompson?
I'm just referring the matter to the regular meeting of council tonight. So if somebody could be so kind as to breathe back the resolution with all the nice words put in my mouth?
Sorry, I wasn't listening.
Can we put it up on the screen?
Can you give me a moment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, all the time in the world.
Okay, well...
At least a year, anyway.
McKinnon works on typing that in. Yeah, a couple of things. We needed three things to get funding for a shelter. We needed a provider, we needed a location, and we needed council approval, I guess, for want of a better word. Okay. So since that time, we now have a group stepping forward to be the provider. Location is an issue because, again, we're hit with the 11th hour. And just like last time it opened as a warming center, it was a surprise to the community as a whole. We were, or I was invited to an in-camera meeting yesterday. And this decision possibly could have been made yesterday and we would have been exactly the same as the previous and exactly the same as when B.C. Housing did a surprise on Second Street. So in that meeting, the discussion was referred to this meeting so it could take place in public. So it's not a backroom deal. Now, it is regrettable that the facility opened without that consent. Okay, are we there yet? Okay. Does that...
I'll read it out. That the committee of the whole recommends to council to suspend enforcement of zoning bylaws regarding 7500 Donaldson Drive to permit the use of the location as a cold, as a, I would say, extreme weather shelter until March 24th, 2020, and that the use of this site be monitored.
And is that just until March, sorry, somebody brought up the fact that what if it's 20 degrees in March, so on or before? Does that address that?
Well, I think B.C. Housing. I believe B.C. Housing funds on a monthly basis.
Okay.
Daniel would like to say something?
So I believe Mr. Pratt may also be able to speak to his board's willingness to how long to support the operations as a provider for that facility. But I don't know if he can do it in a public meeting or if it has to be in the in-camera. So I believe the date is no longer than March 31st at the moment for all organizations involved.
Okay, does Mr. Pratt want to agree with that or say anything or...
Yeah, Your Worship, my board is very clear. We will not participate beyond March 31st. That's the cutoff date for my agency to participate.
Thank you. Counselor Zelensky?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Again, I'm a medical quandary here because, you know, because I'm a paper person. So without the rules in front of me, without how it's going to be run, and I don't know who's going to be doing the monitoring unless one of you guys are going to be walking by there every day. So, you know, we have to figure out how it's actually going to work. And without all that detail in front of me, I'm not going to support this. I do hope that we get answers in our meeting. And I, well, and I do hope that the discussion does go to the regular meeting. For me personally, without those things, I can't recommend to council without those documents in front of me. Thank you.
Counselor Thompson?
I hear your concerns, Counselor Zelensky. We're just recommending a referral to the regular meeting of council. And if there is an issue that's not satisfactory to your way of thinking as a result of... as a result of discussions that, that may happen in, in camera, um, then I think the more appropriate opposition vote would be at the regular meeting of, of counsel tonight. That's my, not telling you what to do, but just recommendation.
Counselor Zalinski?
Uh, then possibly a friendly amendment. Uh, the committee of the whole, um, uh, let, um, forwards discussion on suspending the enforcement of zoning laws to the regular meeting. So, ahead, I think, great.
Okay, that's taken as a friendly, seem to be amended amendment. Um, while they're typing, Ms. Palmer?
I, I'd just like to go back to, I, I think you'd be surprised, Ms. Burden particularly, just how much of the community would be in support of many different things. It's how this one has taken place, once again, that has got the community up in arms. I think the reality is that if, um, an arena had been opened up, if a school had been opened up, if the churches had stepped forward, you would have had full support in all of this. But the fact that you're dealing with, um, a, a, a person who has a legislation or, um, litigation against city council, the fact that the bylaw doesn't even come close, and the fact that our mayor just arbitrarily opened it up against all the rules and regulations, um, and which leads a lot of people to ask why he isn't also stepping down. Um, I think these are all serious concerns within the community, and, um, I was watching and monitoring, uh, Facebook quite closely last night, and yes, there's the odd person that does come up with some pretty crappy things to say, but the concerns are all about not proper process one more time, not being transparent, not letting the community have a say, not letting the, I mean, you've got lots of community people that live in that area that are concerned for their safety. You had a, a man out there last night who basically beat somebody with a golf club last year, ended up in jail and burnt down half the buildings in this town. What does that say to everybody that lives in that area?
Yeah, um, I do have a few things to say over all of these different things that have been brought up in this discussion. Um, one is that, as far as my research led me to believe, is that, um, pretty much, I, I think the mayor or the council, if they felt that it was a state of emergency, then I think that they could declare it, and then it would be either the, the minister or the province to accept it or, and back it up, or whether or not they would want to cancel it. That, that's what my research had told me. Um, as for some of the different bylaws, and enforcement, and the following of rules, and process, et cetera, um, we do know, counsel was well aware on numerous times about the infractions downtown, not meeting code, and, and the zoning requirements downtown, businesses and different building owners down there, and it has been brought up more than once, that none of them, I believe, have ever received a notice. And most people don't want to complain, because we don't want to see more people becoming homeless, or putting more stress on the housing situation, or further, you know, hardship on the business owners. And so just because someone doesn't formally say, you know, "Here is a complaint", because we don't want anything to happen to these people, doesn't mean that you're not aware that there is a bit of a bias as far as my, the way I see things, uh, between some of the rules you decide to enforce and the ones that you don't, um, in regard to just the zoning bylaws in particular. Another, I, uh, comment is about the planning, the planning and the process, and how all of a sudden, again, it's ad hoc, as you like to say, or now it's an emergency. Yes, these discussions have been going on for some time, and a lot of times are round and round in circles, uh, for different reasons. But, um, you know, people try to come up with a plan, or they put forth a suggestion, and a lot of times, or they, they, they try with actual effort to do something, and these efforts and these measures, uh, get squashed, or, uh, blocked by some way. And, and so there's been very little progress actually done on, on this front. Part of which, the reason why this is an emergency situation again, is because counsel have said, basically, that they did not want that building used, and they did not want the, the, the one operator. And so with those two things, knowing that that building in particular was one of the only ones available last year at this time, and that's why it was, it was used, you knew that at the very beginning of all of these discussions. And yes, Social Services Group tried very hard to find something other than that, because we were told that you would not be entertaining any option that included that building. Uh, you know, and as for the operator, someone stepped up, and, and they, and they took it on, and they followed rules that, that were required at the time. Now, you guys did not want that one, and so anything that had them as an operator was also going to be squashed before it made, made it to the table. Now, we have boundary services that, uh, family services that are saying that they will do this. Excellent, this is good, this is something that we should be happy about. And yet, no one's happy that it's happening now. You want it 20 below outside, and it was horrible conditions, it was awful, for months. And yet, people figured, huh, you know, it, it, that's okay. We did our best, which was not the best, because I think what the best you could do was what you were willing to do. It wasn't the best you could do, it was just what you were willing to do. And now, yes, unfortunately, regrettably, it has had to happen on an emergency basis. So yes, and in regards to, um, the, the options with, um, B.C. Housing, you know, some people haven't been exactly kind towards them either, but yes, they are, they apparently are going to help fund it, which is good, but they do need your, your say-so. It always comes back to you guys. You, you do need to realize that, okay? And another thing is that, if, if, most people in the community, you know, they don't think of a service provider being the one to decide that, yes, this is what they're gonna do. They look to you guys to say, you know, "Please take care of this." The average, you know, man or woman in their house is up at night thinking, "Oh my God, is there ever cold out there?" The poor homeless people, you know? People are out there trying to live in this. They have no power to open up a, a building, you know? Some people have taken them into their own homes, which, thank goodness. You know, for the, for those people that could have that help, that's good, that's great. But that's not something that is sustainable either. And it, it, it doesn't serve everyone that needs it. Um, as for the, the issue with, with the particular building, and the court case that's involved, you know? That court case didn't come out of, out of nowhere. And I can't speak to the legalities, but I know what I saw happen, and it, it wasn't really cool, you know? And if you guys were to maybe allow the, uh, shelter to happen this winter, maybe you might be able to think of it as showing a little bit of goodwill, and a little bit of non-bias or prejudices a, a, against that particular building, or that home, that owner, or the business. You might want to consider, consider that. Um, not only, you know, in that, but also some good faith about just community, because I think there is a big difference in what other people, in, in, in different differences in what people view as community right now. And if we're going to be a community, that means everyone. It doesn't mean just your community within your little clique. It means all of us. And just on a technicality, um, we have extreme weather shelter up there that was changed from cold weather shelter, um, just because there are no definitions, and I know that's a bit of a sore point, and it, it is hard when you come to language sometimes. But the extreme weather shelter by the B.C. housing definitions, I think that would be the A to E, which most likely, it, it overall will not be suitable, because it's cold out there right now, you know? And so, eh, that's why sometimes, uh, the cold weather shelter, I think, is, is more expansive, where it's inclusive, all, all...
Okay, is that...
Thank you, sorry.
Okay. Um, Mr. Noseworthy?
I forgot to mention this last night, I was up, sorry. Um, I'd also like to speak to the wording of extreme weather shelter. Um, there is no definition of extreme. Uh, last year it was called a cold weather shelter, and I personally drove by there and saw people outside tanning in the spring when the weather was far from cold. It's supposed to be above zero again next week. This shelter was opened on a forecast of the weather, and it happened to happen. But it can very easily be above zero again next week, but we're saying it's gonna be open until March. If you guys want support from the majority of the people in this town, you need to treat it as a cold weather shelter, and if it's not cold, and no one's lives are at risk, and no one's gonna lose any digits, then it shouldn't be open.
Did you, wait, okay, Counselor Zalinski, yes, I did that.
Thank you very much. Um, just a few comments again, I can't make this. Uh, this counsel, this group, did show good faith. Last year at this time, uh, the place was open. There wasn't an issue. And, um, that was the good faith. Where the faith got lost is when a cold weather shelter turned into a sunbathing area. That's where the good faith got lost. Um, and I can tell you for sure that, and I'll just speak for myself, if Boundary Family Services said, "We'll be the service provider", if they said that six, eight months ago, well, we would have been all over it. Uh, I think, and Counselor Thompson has mentioned that, um, I'm gonna say this table, I'll talk for, for this table, we do have faith with that group. I think the community has faith with that group. But they, they came in yesterday at 2:00, and that's the first time that, and, and still we have, again, no understanding on how this place will be run. So, again, we have tried, you know, we, we do have a provider now. If back in January, when we said, "Hey, we're showing good faith, we're letting the service operate in that building", and in January, when it was brought up to say, "Hey, let's get working on definitions, and get the zoning correct on this, so it can happen", and the public has to say, that still hasn't happened. So, a question to staff is, we had a resolution here about definitions and, um, uh, things like that that was put off for, uh, input from the public, and we still haven't scheduled that, that, or even designed on how that public is gonna feed into that. Do we have any update on when that's gonna happen?
Uh, Your Worship, you know, that, uh, part of the problem was getting through the Christmas holidays and trying to figure out it. At this point in time, I believe Dolores is, is looking at, uh, has looked at whether we have it in a venue like we did at the Curly Ring for the other meeting, uh, and bringing out some of the definitions, some of the areas that we could look at. So though we don't have a, a specific date yet, but, um, a lot of, uh, there's just other things that are kind of taking up date, uh, for both counsel and staff, but it, it certainly is a priority to get on to. And we have the package, we have the information. Now it's really about just getting the public out, and getting the public out too close to Christmas is not gonna be particularly helpful, I feel. And budgets as well, so, those are the things impacting this.
Okay, we are going to have to move this along, but, Ms. Palmer?
Um, in regards to the gentleman in the back, um, we had been, um, brought up to speed with, at the, um, the advisory group, that Council Gar, who has twice our population, was opening a six-bed emergency cold weather shelter. And the way theirs run, six beds only, for a population of over 7,000 people, um, if nobody shows up by 10:00, they shut the doors. And, um, it's only open in emergency cold weather shelter. And I'm kind of wondering why a population of 4,000 needs to have a 24/7 shelter for less than five people that are actually at risk.
Okay, that's, you, uh, sir, uh, over in the corner, sir?
Yes, um, I agree with Ann, Ann Palmer.
Could you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm Greg Skilling. Um, I totally agree with Ann Palmer, and there should be an extreme weather facility only opened up when it's extremely cold. My understanding of that, temperature is minus five. Um, right now, there's no rules, so I presume it's gonna be a 24/7. Um, and who knows when these rules are gonna come into place? It just boggles my mind how just, oh, seems like overnight, this whole facility just, boom, it's all open. No rules, no nothing. It's just mind-boggling. That's all.
I'm not sure if anybody gets it...
Ms. Park?
Yes? Counselor Harp?
Now, this is a place that I am looking forward to, um, during further details in our next meeting, because maybe that will have clarification from counsel, and then we can, um, go forward with other things.
Okay.
So, I suspect we can move forward, uh, move ahead and get on to our next meeting.
Um, sir, if you could identify yourself?
Don Gavins. Uh, Don Gavins.
Yeah.
Uh, my, being that we've come this far, can I suggest to counsel that they expand the word "monitored"? Like, by who, when, what?
Thanks, uh, through the chair. Um, we, we hope to, like, maybe get an answer by tonight, by talking it over between staff and between different meetings. We have a full day, but, uh, maybe we can give counsel a little bit better of an idea tonight at the meeting on that.
Okay, um, okay, what we're looking at is there is a motion to refer the discussion, da-da-da, to tonight's meeting. Okay? Uh, any other comments? Okay, uh, all those in favor? Tonight's meeting, opposed, unanimous? Okay, that's it for that. Now, we will move on to, um, proposed bylaws for discussion. We have Bylaw 2062 and 1623/R Officer Position Establishment for Corporate Services. And we have a recommendation that we recommend to counsel to give first three readings, um, at the regular meeting for these officer positions, and that, uh, there's a further recommendation, um, position, or, uh, sorry, to repeal the Bylaw 1623/R, and then, I believe, to replace it with the 2062. So, uh, does anybody want to make that motion, so we can discuss it? Okay, Counselor Zalinski? And discussion?
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, uh, we, we have a copy of, uh, the old Bylaw 1623 in front of us, and, again, it's, it's a bylaw, we've got, uh, job descriptions there. Um, and I, I guess I have, uh, two concerns. Um, is definitions, uh, trying to move away from contracts and be, again, transparent with the public as far as job descriptions and who's responsible for what, and that's not in this bylaw. And, um, and I'd like to, uh, put your attention to, I've got page 21 of 26. Um, it's Schedule A under City Administrator.
Oh, clarification, is this, are you talking the, um, 2062 or the 1623 that would be repealed?
1623, the one that we're repealing.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm on, uh, the, the Schedule A, powers and duties, responsibilities, City Administrator. Uh, bottom of the page, well, um, uh, big pay paragraph, fourth one up. Uh, the City Administrator recommends the hiring or dismissal of department head staff. So that, that comment is disappearing. Uh, the C.A. won't have discussion about this. Um, yeah, that, that can, that concerns me, um, to say the least. Comments, I guess, that I'm asking for?
Uh, yeah, well, yeah, we can get a comment, but, um, let's see, you know?
Thank you, Worship. Uh, the bylaws trying to do a number of things, uh, is to try to, and it's been reviewed for, for legality, the types of things you don't necessarily want in a bylaw. Uh, but also there's a, the principle of one employee, city council hires one employee, city manager, that person then hires the rest of the staff. And one of the difficulties under, um, the over... And one of the difficulties under the over approach is that when you have employees that are beholden to council as opposed to the CAO as individuals, as a council as body, you end up with, you could end up with divided loyalties. And so over time, the notion is that, you know, council should be approving through part of the budgeting process, the FTEs, the full-time employees that you have on your roster. Council should be reviewing the organizational chart and saying, this is how the organization will be run and have that approval. There are officers that in legislation, as a safeguard, are protected, and if the CAO dismisses, have a right to come before council, an obligation to come before council and have their date in court so that it affects council. And that's to protect the council and the employees in those sensitive positions whereby, you know, CAO fires a chief financial officer, and council maybe wants to know why that sort of happened. And so the legislation ensures that that doesn't take place. So, I think part of the issue is that organizations and, you know, council, been here a few months, and we spend, you know, a great deal of time talking about issues that even 10 years ago a council wouldn't have been spending the time they did. So, lots of emerging issues, lots of times people take on other duties, and so it's really hard for those to be enshrined in a bylaw whereby every time you change duty and something comes up, and now all of a sudden, a person gets tasked with that job, you don't necessarily want to have to change that. Now, that doesn't mean that council shouldn't be kept in the know. So, as the CAO, if I'm going to change a job and say, okay, from now on, I'm going to merge Public Works with whatever, or take this function out of Public Works and put it in another area, I think that's, there's a duty to inform council with us because now the organizational chart is being moved around. So, I think what this is really trying to do is not have every single change that occurs on a day-to-day basis have to come to council to amend. And it is in keeping with other communities and how they're structured under the one city manager. So, that's some of the difference. And so, your worship, I think the concerns are legitimate, but there may be better mechanisms to be able to deal with those things that necessarily have it enshrined in a bylaw in this way. I think the most important thing in this bylaw is really just modernizing. And right now, I would argue that, you know, the city has far too many people that are kind of officers that you necessarily need in place, and it's really those main ones that should be there. And as far as anything else, you know, as you're well aware, law is law. And when it comes to the dismissal, certainly council has to be made aware of that it's happening, not so much that it's a recommendation to fire the person to hire, but to be made aware that you're taking this action, if council has concern, then at least the CAO would be prudent for the CAO to listen to the concerns of council, right?
Counsel Thompson?
Just adding to that, too, the act only requires that council appoint the three, well, two in particular, that's the corporate officer and the chief financial officer, and the administrator is maybe. And that's what's being reduced here. And so I am in support of the recommendation.
Okay, Counsel Moslin?
Thank you, Mayor. I too am in support of this. I know despite my writing habits that most of you endure, I love simplicity. The less is better. It allows us mar latitude and to deal with mar anomaly. Rather than to have a very prescriptive bylaw like the old one, that really will tie us in knots and is already outdated and would need to be constantly updated. I find that this bylaw, with its simplicity and its referral to the community charter very clearly, Sections 147, 148, 149, where the job descriptions are laid out in legislation, that provides a very simple mechanism for council to govern through its officers. However, I do believe, and I think our interim CAO has said it, that my expectation is that if the internal structure of the organization changes, council will need to be informed and approved. I'm apprehensive when jobs or departments are suddenly moved around without council being informed and at least having opportunity for discussion. Nonetheless, I do support this modernization and simplification of what could be a very complicated bylaw. Thank you.
Counsel Zelinski?
Thank you, Ms. Rhea. And I do agree with that, and that's what kind of makes me nervous, is we've seen department heads added in this organization without that discussion. We've seen hours of work scheduled that were shuffled around without a discussion, and which should not happen. So, maybe good practices weren't followed, but as long as it's clear that we still have, say, a comment, a whatever into that organizational structure, I've got no problem. But that's not what I've seen in the past, and that's my concern. Oh, question, whether or not fire chief should be added. Just throw it out there.
Through me to you. In reviewing, reflective to that last question, in reviewing bylaws from other municipalities, because we don't just think we can, we should do a change like this without consulting with legal counsel and with other municipalities. When this was put in place, I believe there was a time when city council made the management team more responsible, maybe acted without a quasi-CAO for a time here in Grand Forks. I'm not the expert on this. Mr. McKinnon had to step out for a phone call. He would know because I think his dad was involved at the time, and maybe Counselor Thompson was as well. So, creating a bylaw at that time was possibly the right thing, where if you wanted to elevate managers as to be reporting to council directly versus having a quasi-CAO in place at that time, this is a good solution. And also, this was at the time the municipal act was in place, and this seemed to be the standard for what municipalities were doing. The community charter changed that, and lots of legal cases came up. So, legal counsel's advice through the last year was to please, please fix this bylaw and reduce it. This has been run through legal counsel. This has been, we looked at the City of Kelowna bylaw, which this is largely based on. We looked at all sorts of other municipalities. The, in one instance, I believe we had the approving officer listed separately in there. This is the job title that's held by Dolores at the time, which is appointed by council because I believe it must be appointed based on the Local Government Act. So, that's a, but it doesn't have to be defined in the bylaw because it's really the job description as per that act that somebody needs to hold that role within the organization. Do we need the fire chief in here? No, we do not. So, it's one of these additional items. It's basically meant to standardize, to clean it up, and to protect the organization from all sorts of legal items.
Thank you, CAO.
Your worship, and just to add to, you know, a number of counselors have raised, you know, a concern that before there are major changes, council should be made aware, council should be made aware of it. May I suggest that, you know, a better way to do that is to itemize that within a council policy. We could draft a policy, and then it's a council policy, which inherently has as much strength as this. So, if the CAO does not follow policy, council then could ask those questions, why is that happening? And I think it has as much strength as a formal bylaw that doesn't require the vote. And then we cover that, and the CAO knows that that's an expectation by council.
Okay, so we have the motion to forward this to the meeting tonight for the repeal of the old bylaw and then a new one coming in. Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry? Information items, non correspondents, non-late items, reports, questions, blah, blah, blah. So, we're down to question period from the public. Ms. Palmer?
Not questions, just sort of two comments. I've been getting feedback from people that work, and they're unhappy about the fact that they don't get to come to these meetings because they actually are paying and getting paid and then paying again, so they can't be here. And is there some way that something could be done to allow them the ability to come to meetings like this? And I don't see how personally, but I'm just bringing it up there so you know. The other thing I'd just like to say is I would like to thank you, Mayor Crowe. This is the first time I've come to a meeting where I've actually been allowed to speak without being shut down because I did not follow the other mayor's agenda. And it's very nice to know that I actually do have a right as a taxpaying citizen to actually have a say. Thank you.
Further? Seeing none, looking for a motion to adjourn. Counsel Moslin? All those in favor? Meeting adjourned. Ooh.